Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem. We have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise as I introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that you all, all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Today's guest to do the invocation is Reverend Rainey G. Dankel. And Reverend Dankel has been an associate director at Trinity Church here in Boston since August of 2012, where her responsibilities include pastoral care and community outreach. She has over 25 years of experience in municipal management, including lead responsibilities for community development, public works, public safety, financial planning, and urban setting. So she's right here at home with the rest of us. And as a deacon in the diocese of East Carolina, she worked for nine years to bring municipal and interfaith resources to address problems of urban poverty, homelessness, hunger, and unemployment. At Trinity, she works with a variety of social justice ministries, including the anti-racism team, the Response to Violence Working Group, Episcopal City Mission, and the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization. Reverend Rainey holds a bachelor's degree in philosophy from Mary Balden College and has done graduate work at Duke and public administration at UNC, and has a master's of divinity from Yale Divinity School. So without any further ado, I introduce one of us to all of you, Reverend Rainey G. Dankel.
Good afternoon. This is a reading from the prophet Isaiah. "Is not this the fast that I choose, to loose the bonds of injustice, to undo the thongs of the yoke, to let the oppressed go free, and to break every yoke? Is it not to share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house? Then your light shall break forth like the dawn, and your healing shall spring up quickly; your vindicator shall go before you; the glory of the Lord shall be your rear guard. Then you shall call, and the Lord will answer; you shall cry for help, and God will say, 'Here I am.'" If you remove the yoke from among you, the pointing of the finger, the speaking of evil; if you offer food to the hungry and satisfy the needs of the afflicted, then your light shall rise in the darkness, and your gloom be like the noonday. The Lord will guide you continually and satisfy your needs in parched places and make your bones strong. You shall be like a water garden, like a spring of water whose waters never fail. Your ancient ruins shall be rebuilt; you shall raise up the foundations of many generations; you shall be called the repairer of the breach, the restorer of streets to live in." Let us pray. "Gracious God, we praise you for the blessings you bring to us each day. We pray that we may always be wise stewards of your gifts to us. We thank you for these leaders gathered here. We ask for your guidance, for your wisdom to be in their hearts and minds, that the work which they do may be pleasing to you and bring peace and justice to the people of Boston. Here our prayer, O holy One of blessing." Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Rainey, for your inspiring message. At this time, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1049, Message and Order for Annual Appropriation and Tax Order for the FY 2015 filed in the office of the city clerk on June 16, 2014.
Docket 1049 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1050, Message and Order for Annual Appropriation for the School Department for the FY 2015 filed in the office of the city clerk on June 16, 2014.
Docket 1050 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1051, Message and Order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 16, 2014.
Docket 1051 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1052, Message transmitting certain information from the police department regarding crime statistics for May 1, 2014, and ending May 31, 2014.
Docket 1052 will be placed on file. Reports of public offices and others, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1053, The Constable Vons of Purnell Jackson, Verinda Malden, Michael Elnovo, and Samuel Placid, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, received and approved.
Docket 1053 will be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1053 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 1054, Notice received from the city clerk according to Chapter 6 of the Audiences of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 4, 2014.
Docket 1054 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like me to read both?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. Docket number 0386, The Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation, to which was referred on February 26, 2014, docket number 0386, Order for Hearing Regarding Small Business Permitting and Licensing Reform, submits an interim report, which will remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. Docket number 0439, The Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation, to which was referred on March 5, 2014, docket number 0439, Order for Hearing Regarding Improved Internal Processes for Licensing Small Business, submits an interim report. The docket will remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes the chair of the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation, Counselor Wu, on docket 0386 and 0439.
So thanks, Ron, for also passing out a copy. I think you all have a million copies of this report in front of you now. I'm very excited to present the findings after now almost a month and a half of meetings across the city with different small business owners, residents, neighbors, and other advocates on recommendations to simplify the process. The report has 25 different recommendations around better advocacy for small businesses, around coordinating between departments, introducing technology in the most needed places, and touches on some specific licenses and permits as well. So this isn't an interim, this is an interim report, looking for more feedback and more specifics, so we'll keep the, ask to keep the item in committee as we discuss implementation and look for potentially certain legislative changes or other changes to implement some of these. But I want to thank everyone for all your participation in all the meetings across the city. I think these recommendations are really the things that came up the most often, and some of them are very specific and, I believe, very implementable. So looking forward to following up and working with the administration, the mayor, and his, with his continued support for this.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu moves through acceptance of the interim report and that the docket 0386 remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0386 will remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. Counselor Wu moves for acceptance of the interim report and that docket 0439 remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0439 will remain in the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard.
Docket number 1018, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC 5-5.2, Residency and Voting, Requirement for Certain Offices.
Our chair recognizes the chair on the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 1018.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a hearing yesterday. It was well attended by our colleagues. The ordinance that's amending CBC 5-5.2 amends the current law, residency law, by extending the amount of time that individuals appointed by the mayor have to establish residency from six months to one year. It also extends the time period for persons acting in place of such individuals from 90 days to 100 days to establish residency, and increases the penalties for those who violated the residency rules from one year to two years of disqualification within their office. So the hearing yesterday, the representative from the administration was Mary Beth Cusack, the Assistant Corporation Counsel. She obviously spoke about the importance of being able to cast the widest net and having the flexibility to accommodate families who need to relocate, sell their homes, uproot their families, make school decisions, et cetera. This docket would only apply to department heads and cabinet members. These numbers can change, but currently there are less than 50 people who would be affected by this. The Municipal Research Bureau was also present and testified in support of the docket. The docket maintains the attention for appointed officials to live in the city while accommodating personal and family needs. As chair, I recommend that docket 1018 pass. We heard some great testimony from our colleagues, Counselor Baker yourself, Counselor Arianna Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Siomo, very valid concerns, and I feel that there's a commitment from the administration to use this as an opportunity to have a broader discussion about residency, particularly around enforcement and around having it be fairly and equally applied throughout all of our city departments. So with that willingness, I'm moving that we pass docket 1018. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to commend the chairman of the Government Operations Committee, as well as the administration, for coming together with this, something I think is a fair compromise. When the initial proposal was floated in terms of doing away with the residency, I was obviously critical of it, thought that it was an unfair policy change, and further exacerbated the inconsistencies with the way that residency is already applied to the workforce. I commend the administration, the mayor particularly, and his team for coming up with something that makes sense, mindful of the fact that we're talking about people's lives, children, houses, buying a house, selling a house, enrolling children in school. And a year seems to me a good, as I said, a good compromise to reach, and I'll be happy to support this, this new language in this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to first compliment my chair, Counselor Flaherty, on moving this legislation. This was the right thing to do. I think the mayor's office did the right thing by changing course here. I am and will always be a very strong advocate of residency. I don't think there's another city in the world that has more people who are as talented, smart, and as awesome as the people in the city of Boston. That said, I would love to have even more people come to the city of Boston, and this actually gives people an opportunity and eases folks in to becoming a resident of the city of Boston. Hypothetically, if you had a house, and you needed to sell your house, and you didn't have $600,000 or $700,000 in between to purchase a home, and then, and move to Boston as well as put your children into school, this would actually work out. In my prior career, when I worked for Johnson &amp; Johnson, I worked for Eli Lilly, they gave us the opportunity, if we moved, for, there's no relocation package in Boston, they actually did give us a relocation package, but they gave us an opportunity to put our house on the market, and if it did not sell within one year, they would actually purchase it. So we are actually in alignment with what happens in the private sector here. And also, again, this gives us an opportunity to not move away from residency, and actually gives us an opportunity to make residency stronger. And I just want to hit on that point. If you get caught not laying your head on a pillow in the city of Boston four nights a week, what happens to you? Instead of a one-year suspension in terms of your opportunity to work in the city of Boston, there's actually a two-year suspension there. And I actually look forward to the administration bolstering the folks who look at that. In addition, as we are looking to diversify all of the ranks in the city of Boston, at a time when change is happening in the city, this also gives us an opportunity to cast that net wide and far. So I think this is the proper way to go. It bolsters residency. It keeps residency for people who make the most money. And I think that's another, another component here. The people in public works that we work with on a regular basis, who make $40,000 or $42,000 a year, who are required to live right here in the city, those folks are finding a way to live in the city, so we need to make sure that the folks who make much more than that figure out a way to live in the city. This is the proper compromise. I applaud the mayor's office for listening to us as a council who has to be signatory to codify this legislation, and I want to thank my colleagues for moving this forward. And so I look forward to voting in affirmative, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Like many of our colleagues and the residents of Boston, I was very concerned and disturbed at the initial request made by our newly-elected mayor. We cannot afford to go backwards with regards to residency. What's before us today is certainly an amendment to, to some flexibility that we built in to the residency law, extending from six months to 12 months. I'm not deeply concerned about the additional six months. I am concerned, however, that this body and the mayor not telegraph any signal that we are backing away from residency. So that was one concern I had. The second concern, which hasn't been resolved, and puts me in a position where I'm debating whether I should even support this, is that the administration has made a commitment for transparency. Yet, at the, at the hearing, which I had a chance to view the video of, it didn't seem to come prepared with information in terms of where we stand today with regards to residency. And for the last three or four months, I've been waiting to receive the information that I routinely receive about personnel, including the status in terms of gender and race, income, IUD, and residency. That hasn't been received yet, Mr. President. So what I will do is ask you to communicate to the administration, to let them know that this body needs that information, particularly as we go through the budgetary process, but additionally, to routinely ensure that there is a proper balance between the executive branch of government and the legislative branch. Without the information, particularly coming from the accounting department and personnel department, we are handcuffed in terms of our ability to do our job, to be the countervailing weight in city government. So I'm still debating, Mr. President, whether I'm going to vote for this, and the only reason I may not vote for it is because, to date, the administration, unlike the prior administration, has yet to provide us with information about the real personnel statistics for city government. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Yancy. And with that, Counsel Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1018. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1018 has passed. Madam Clerk. Oh, excuse me, Madam Clerk. Could you please record Counselor Baker and Counselor Presley as president?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0739, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC Ordinance, Chapter 5, Section 5.10, Salary Categories for Certain Offices.
Our chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0739.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This docket deals with 0739, an ordinance amending CBC 5-5.10, Salary Categories for Certain Offices. Mayor Walsh had proposed to increase the range of salaries for police, fire commissioner, fire commissioner, and director of administrative services from $175 to $200. Based on yesterday's hearing, we heard from Karen Connor from the Office of Budget Management, and Sam Tyler from the Boston Research Bureau, and we also know, based on last year's media reports, that over 200 officers, rank-and-file sworn officers, make more than the current commissioner, and with the new collective bargaining, when that kicks in, that number will well exceed 200. So I felt that, in order to maintain a competitive position, but also from a leadership and morale standpoint, that those figures should be adjusted comparatively. In front of you, you have some national data, as well as some local metro Boston data, and you see where our commissioners fall on the depth chart with respect to competitors, both locally and nationally, and particularly given the size of our forces and the demands on our departments. I feel that it's important, and I'm recommending that docket 0739 ought to pass in a new draft. I recommend that the salary range be increased from 200 to 250. So it's a $50,000 range, consistent with the compensation and advisory boards, $50,000 range, and again, given where we fall, both locally and nationally, it's more than appropriate to move for passage in a new draft.
Could you repeat that amount again, Counsel Flaherty?
Yes. The mayor is looking for 175 to 200. Based on yesterday's hearing and learning the evidence and the testimony that we were able to gather from the hearing, I'm recommending that the salary range be increased from 200 to 250, and that it ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0739 in a new draft. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 07... Madam Clerk, would you read the roll?
Docket number 0739. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem, yes. We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
The clerk has informed you that we have a unanimous vote, and that docket 0739 has passed in a new draft. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1055, Counsel McCarthy offered the following order for hearing regarding litter caused by unsolicited delivery circulars.
Chair recognizes Counsel McCarthy on docket 1055.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank Mike Nichols for his help putting this order together. The complaints are numerous regarding these unsolicited delivery packages. I know Counselor Lamatina will be signing on and speaking after me. He's been working on this issue as well. These bags are everywhere: lawns, pathways, porches, hedges, steps. I know they're all over my district, and I'm sure they're all over your districts as well. The complaints that I receive at many neighborhood meetings vary. Seniors can't retrieve these bags from bushes and hedges, nor should they have to. Boston is famous for its snowbirds, seniors who travel to Florida for the winter months, and nothing says, "I am not home," more than 15, 20 Globe Direct mailers sitting on the front porch. Snow blowers shooting these bags all over, all over the place during storms. As a former public works employee, I know we have enough to do in the wintertime rather than pick up trash and debris that have been shot out of a snow blower. The issue here is simple: Globe Direct or any other advertising should not put the burden of cleaning up, picking up, or digging through the bushes on the people in the neighborhoods of Boston. This hearing is really in hopes of resolving that issue. It's a nuisance to our constituents, and I feel that the hearing is needed to make sure that we alleviate that nuisance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Lamatina?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that my name be added. This is something I've been working on myself, also with Counsel O'Malley, in regards to the new task force that we're going to be meeting tomorrow. This has been a problem in my district, and I've been trying to work with that company now for over a year. It's ridiculous. They're just, they go up and down the streets and just throw out their cars, and it's littering all my neighborhoods throughout the city, and it's just, it's a blight. When we first called them up, they, it got a little better, and then they stopped again. And I know Cambridge has some issues with it, and they have an audience, so I'm just asking that my name be added, and when we have the hearing, I have the audience, and we'll work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. Please add Counsel Lamatina's name, Counselor Siomo's name, Counselor Murphy's name, Counselor Wu's name, Counselor Zachem's name. Please add my name, Madam Clerk, Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank my friend, the maker, from District 5, Counsel McCarthy, as well as my colleague from District 1, Counselor Lamatina. He is right. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock, we're having the inaugural working session, a working group meeting of the Clean Boston Task Force. It will be at the PiMonte Room. Please join us. And one of the, through this exercise and through meeting with folks and talking to residents and small businesses, we've identified what many of the problems are, and the issue is how to address them. And if you look at the business...
And if you look at the business districts, it's the big three: cigarette butts, scratch tickets, Styrofoam coffee cups that are often strewn about. If you look in the more residential areas, this is one of the biggest issues. We hear it throughout the entire city. Counsel McCarthy brings up a very good point. It's also a public safety issue. You know, if someone isn't home, and there are several of these strewn about their front lawn, it's an invitation for perhaps a burglary in it. So it's a public safety aspect is also a key element to this. So I thank him, look forward to working on this, urge you all to join us tomorrow at the working session for the Clean Boston Task Force. And it's these small quality-of-life issues that really go to the heart of what we do each and every day in terms of constituent services. It's an important issue. It's one that we don't take lightly, and it's one that we can actually absolutely affect a real difference. So thank you, and I look forward to working to address this issue.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I find this to be a very relevant issue. It's an urgent issue in terms of many neighborhoods and communities, in particular where there are foreclosures, and folks continue just to pile on. I also would note, and I would like to look at and explore, the many "Sell Your House for Cash" signs that are popping up in specific neighborhoods in and around our community. It communicates something negative in our neighborhoods and communities. It communicates instability, and many of these folks could possibly be taking advantage of people in our community. So I think both of these issues are connected with what we want for our neighborhoods and communities, and I really want to thank Counsel McCarthy. I did say to Counsel Lamatina, "He got you." This sounds like something that Counsel Lamatina would have gotten to first, but again, it is a relevant quality-of-life issue for people in our neighborhoods and community, and it's notable, and I'd like to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Please add Counsel Jackson's name, Counsel Flaherty's name, Counsel Baker's name. Counsel Yancey. Thank you very much. And Counsel Presley's name.
I'm sorry.
Counsel Yancey.
I'd like to commend my good colleague from Hyde Park. I think that his experience in city government prior to joining us on the legislative branch of government is paying off, and I certainly would like to have my name added to this hearing, though.
Please add Counsel Yancey's name. Did I miss anybody? All right. That matter will be placed docket 1055 as a sign to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1056. Counsel Linehan for Counsel Zakim.
Counsel Zakim moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1056. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1056 has passed.
Docket number 1057. Counsel Linehan for Counsel Zakim.
Counsel Zakim moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1057. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1057 has passed.
Docket number 1058. Counsel Linehan for Counsel Zakim.
Counsel Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1058. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1058 has passed.
Docket number 1059. Counsel Linehan for Counsel Zakim.
Counsel Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1059. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1059 has passed.
Docket number 1060. Counsel Linehan for Counsel Yancey.
Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1060. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1060 has passed. I've been informed by the Clerk that there are two late-file matters, in which, in absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. Madam Clerk, please read the first late-file matter.
Counsel Bill Linehan for Counsel Jackson ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has passed.
Counsel Linehan for Counsel Jackson ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the second late-file matter has passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Green Sheets. Anybody wishing to move a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. I didn't see who was first. Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page 2, under "Assign for Further Action," docket 0637, and also listed on page 13 of 21 as part of the Administration's capital order.
Oh, okay.
And it's 0637, correct?
0637.
In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 0637, sponsored by the Mayor, message and order for a loan of $72,848,295 for the purpose of paying costs of construction, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing the Dearborn 6-12 STEM Early College Academy, which is a new school facility to be built on the site of the current Dearborn School located at 35 Greenville Street in the City of Boston, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the City of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Property and Construction Management Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 7, 2014. It was referred to the committee on April 9, 2014, and received its first reading on June 4, 2014.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Siomo on docket 0637.
Thank you. As Madam Clerk said, we took our first vote on June 4. As I explained at the time, we need to pull this today in order to adhere to the MSBA timeline. On background, this new school is going to be grades 6 to 12 with a STEM-focused curriculum on the site of the existing Dearborn School in Roxbury that will serve 600 students. Estimated cost of the project is nearly $73.5 million. We expect MSBA reimbursements to total over $37 million of the cost. The beginning of final design phase will be the summer, fall of 2014. Construction to begin in 2015, and completion September 2017. Dearborn School students will be relocated to the Burke High School beginning September 2014, and remain there through June of 2017. And I ask for a second reading and a vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
The question now comes on acceptance in passage of docket 0637 in its second reading. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 0637, which just received the second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0637 has been accepted and passed unanimously by the body. Chair recognizes Counsel Lamatina.
Try this one more time. Madam Clerk, please pull from green sheets, page 2 or 21, Economic Development, Planning, and Labor. This is docket number 0515. It's a sign for further action, and it needs a second reading.
In the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, docket number 0515, sponsored by the Mayor, message and order that on November 7, 2013, the Public Improvements Commission, known as PIC, reviewed a joint petition by Joseph Stefano Jr. and the City of Boston's Park and Recreation Department to abandon all rights of public travel on certain portion of Swift Street, a private way in East Boston, as shown on a plan marked "City of Boston." This was submitted, referred to the committee on March 26, 2014. It was a hearing on May 22, 2014, and received its first reading on June 4, 2014.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Lamatina on docket 0515.
Thank you. Just briefly, this is a short street in East Boston, Swift Street. It busts a cemetery, and a private residence is 100 feet. Public improvement commission voted to abandon it. One of your butters purchased a little piece for $40,000, and we need a second vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lamatina moves acceptance and passage of docket 0515. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes. And Counsel Zakim. Counsel Zakim, yes. Mr. President, on docket number 0515, it was unanimous vote for a second reading.
On docket 0515, the Clerk has informed me that the vote was unanimous, and therefore the matter has passed. Any more from the green sheets? Excuse me? And received its second reading. There are two late-file matters which, in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections to the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Siomo, George DeRosa. Thomas C. Murphy. Benedict A. Ruffo. For Counsel Flaherty, Michael Dapina. For Counsel Lamatina, Andrea Spagnolo. For Counsel Yancey, Percy G. Banks. Peter Frank Crawford. Lynda Joyce Dias. Valerie Maloon. Actress Ruby Dee. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. So the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it is also in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, June 25, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor adjourned, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned. Thank you.